I'm ready for a motion to the superintendent.
So move, so move.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Ready to vote?
The votes are open. Mr. Lister, do you have any comment? Ms. White, how's everyone's doing? All votes are in, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We have one public comment. Ms. Shanayn?
Yes.
Holman, okay. Ms. Holman. Okay, here we go. Victims may speak to the board on items of concern to the school district provided they have completed and intended to address the board, which they did. And file with the president of the board, the clerk, no later than six thirty. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to address the board. We ask that you remarks to the board be respectful. If you should have a complaint against a specific employee, we ask that you submit your written complaint to the superintendent. If the complaint is against the superintendent, please address your written complaint to either me as board president or to the clerk of the board.
Good evening. Again, my name is Shanayn, and I am at nine hundred Southwest Robinson Avenue, apartment nine zero two. And I am here as the lead organizer of the Topeka Jump Organization. I just wanted to say hello. I hope that you have an awesome beginning to the school year. And by the way, it's time to give you a brief update on Topeka Jump and the work that we've been doing and how it may positively impact the district and particularly the families within the district. I know that many of you here probably are familiar with Topeka Jump, but we are a coalition across the county that brings people together to speak loudly for funding and policy changes that will positively impact vulnerable populations and the community. And so, one of our very first passions was with communities and schools, particularly in this district. And I just want to continue to affirm the relationship that Topeka Public Schools has with communities and schools. Awesome program. One of the sheets that you have before you is just some stats from the previous school year on how well students are doing on the case load of the site coordinators within the various schools that they're located. Becky Stilman is someone that I tend to meet with throughout the year. She shared some testimonies with me from students. And so, again, as the Topeka Jump Organization, just want to continue to affirm that relationship. We know that they are a great resource within the school building. Also, we've been up to some areas related to affordable housing and transportation. And so, there's some information on that second sheet, just to give you an idea of what Jump has been up to. This past April, we had our annual event where we bring the community together at one time to be on one accord about things that we like to see happen in Topeka and Shoney County. And so, in the area of affordable housing, we're working with the city of Topeka to figure out strategies that can be implemented so that there's greater access to affordable housing for particularly low and moderate income families in the community. And so, I'm not going to go into all the details about that. We just have some information there for you. Ways that we're continuing to move the conversation forward include some just educational time. Some educational events where we bring in experts from other cities in state who are implementing some of the strategies that we're talking about, particularly in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So, we're looking to bring those experts to town and to gather community leaders and officials to hear from other communities about how they're using this strategy to increase access to safe and affordable housing. With transportation, I don't know if you've heard of Soto. And Susan Duffy, she can talk about it much better than I can, but we are a big advocate for Soto. Several years ago, we reached out to Topeka Metro and other officials and talked about the need for people in the cities to be able to get to work at the major companies in the county. And so, that's just some statistics from the month of May. So far, Soto has provided over thirty-five hundred rides in one month alone and close to nine hundred. This is a clear indication that people who live in the city and don't have a car need to use this type of service to get to their living wage job. And so... Pretty much racked it up, okay. I can't speak enough about the impact that Soto has on families who don't have a car. So, I hope that a lot of families in the district are able to utilize this more affordable way to get to work. And that promotes being a reliable and effective worker for companies like Mars, Target Distribution, and things of that nature. So, that's a little bit of what Jump has been up to. We hope that these programs will impact the community at large and particularly families within Topeka Public Schools. Just thank you for listening and look forward to getting it for you throughout the year.
Thank you. We're now moving on to the agenda, waiting for a disposition of business-wide consent.
Mr. President, I move the board through the items of business-wide consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign this special project and purchase a bid for on behalf of the board.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any discussion?
More slide wondering on the Topeka Metro smart cards. Possibly Mr. Robbins could elaborate a little bit on the details of that.
And as Mr. Robbins does that, we also have Advisors Excel that's here this evening that would like to speak to an item on the consent agenda that they are listed for as well. So, Mr. Robbins, if you can start with that and then introduce Advisors Excel, that'd be great.
The behalf of you, Dr. Anderson. To Dr. Milson's question, there is an agreement on the consent agenda that Topeka Public Schools is purchasing twenty-one hundred bus passes for a total of $279,000. We have Ms. Susan Duffy here, and at this point, I would like to extend our appreciation to Ms. Duffy for working in a very collaborative manner with the district as we try to reach a number when it comes to the bus passes that we felt was reasonable to service our high school students and also our middle school students. We last year spent $400,000 on bus passes, a considerable high number of bus passes from what we actually needed. So, we had a chance to adjust that. We went from the original proposal that was about $175 per pass down to $133 per pass, and that was done with the cooperation of Ms. Duffy and Topeka Metro. And we certainly appreciate that. So, we have bus passes that we make available to our high school and middle school students for this upcoming academic year. They'll be able to ride free, have reliable transportation, and we're doing so at a much lower cost than what we did last year. So, again, that certainly is helpful in more ways than one. So, hopefully, Dr. Milson had answered your question.
Thanks very much.
Now, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Ms. Lindsay Freeman, who is representing Advisors Excel. Advisors Excel, as all of our board members realize, has been a tremendous business partner for us over the years, and they continue to increase that partnership and that contribution to Topeka Public Schools. Another friend of education and friend of Topeka Public Schools is Mr. Greg Swark with Swark Design. They are combining forces to do a project which I think the board will find very valuable and very useful for our students moving forward. So, I'll turn it over and let Ms. Freeman give you some details about that project.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Well, he hit the nail on the head. We have started a very new, it's still in its infant stage, but it's going to be done in a couple of weeks, if you believe that when you see these renderings. Earlier this year, Advisors Excel was approached by one of the Topeka Public Schools about the need of a sensory room. You're familiar with such a room. It can be a de-escalation tool, it can be a room that serves, it's just a place for students to go and calm down, kind of get their bearings again. And we really understood and appreciated why the school could use such a room. In visiting with Ms. Sharp from the general director for the school's elementary education and Dr. Anderson, Mr. Robbins, we decided to look at the overall district and try to find a school that could best use this room with the most amount of students, so the school that was most in need of a sensory room. We settled on Williams Science and Fine Arts Magnet School. And I would say at the beginning of July, Greg and I and his team visited the school, found the space that the school was willing to offer for the sensory room, and these drawings have come to life relatively quickly. All of this will be ready to go by back-to-school night on August thirteenth, if you believe that, it's very exciting, and for school to start on the fourteenth. So, Greg is going to tell you a little bit more about what's in the rooms. I have some thoughts that board members have, and I would be happy to share with others about what's going to be in the rooms and what makes it so special. But we're just really honored to have the opportunity, once again, to partner with the district on something that means so much and that will help so many students and will truly serve as a template for many, many more schools. And we hope that additional organizations and companies will come along, sign us, to help our schools have such a needed benefit in their classroom and middle school.
Thank you, Lindsay. Yes, when Lindsay approached Swark Design Group and asked, and told us about the project, she shared a video with us of some of these sensory rooms that were being implemented across the country. And I think our staff was touched as much as anything. And the fact that Advisors, knowing that they've been a good supporter and community member and a great advocate for 501, she asked if we would partner with them in helping bring these to life. It was an aggressive schedule. We toured, I think, five different schools. And again, we chose Williams as our kind of pilot. We like to do these in other schools. And our goal basically was to come in and determine what we need to do to these particular classrooms, to make them safe, to reinvigorate them with paint and floor covering and ceilings and remove obstacles that, you know, would potentially be dangerous to some of these kids in these areas. And so, you will see some renderings behind you. I think they depict some of the things that are in these sensory rooms. But also, behind Dr. Morrison is a complete list of everything that is being purchased and donated on behalf of Advisors Excel. And so, a lot of these things will be in storage, they'll be rotating in and out. But again, we've been able to partner, the Cursen Contractors has just come on board yesterday to help us try to get this ready for Watermelon at Williams, I believe, is the event on the thirteenth. And we have also gone out, and within the last day, we've found carpeting that was not necessarily available and been able to get it at a very discounted price from some of our suppliers. We've been able to reach out to some carpet installer who's willing to donate his time and labor to install the carpet for free on the weekends. And we're meeting there, hopefully tomorrow, with the concurrence of the board to begin work on the room at Williams and bring this to life. So, we're excited and happy to be a partner with Advisors and with the district on bringing these rooms to the schools, which we think are greatly needed. And again, I mean, I think the passion of the teachers and the special ed teachers that we talked to in working through this was kind of the inspiration for us and I think for Lindsay as well to make this happen. So, thank you.
Questions?
So, not really a question, really more so a statement. You will hear this from everybody else who wrote it. And even though we have loaded on this, yeah, we'll tell you anyway now. Thank you. I think this is awesome. So, I'm just looking at some of these things, and I have to admit, some of them actually look really interesting to me. A six-foot sensory bubble tube, I kind of want to see that. But just for your partnership, so both of your organizations, thanks for the honor you have had so much over the years. And not only do you work with us, you are working around, it's kind of big for our students, so, you know, we really appreciate it and we're excited to have you here.
Dr. Morrison did comment that they should have had these back when I was just here.
Just a quick comment, which is that we do, Mrs. Kirk is exactly right. We do know now, very much through research, that these materials are extremely successful interventions for kids. And that the hope is that kids are able to very quickly return to the classroom. So, other students' learning is not disrupted, a child is able to be given a more contained environment that allows them to work through the moment and to master those emotional regulation skills and then be able to get right back into the classroom. And this is such an advancement over what we used to do in the past. So, thank you so much. I'm very touched by your commitment to our students.
I think that's one of the key reasons, again, for the rooms are so successful from that standpoint. I mean, the fact that, you know, we have medicine balls in these rooms that kids can throw into padded walls versus throwing the desk in a classroom is, you know, tremendously helpful in keeping your order in the class and things like that. So, they're not all fun, but, you know, they all have a purpose. The swings and the metronomes and everything has a purpose for why it's there and it has a calming effect.
Ms. Kirk.
Well, the one I understand, you know, what you can do with a therapy swing, I mean, it's like being a club, I mean, I can understand most of these, but I don't get the tube. So, help me, how does that, how does that work? Where are we dealing with that? Help me.
Don't attack the tube.
For me, it looks exciting, but in terms of, what is it, what are we getting, visual or eye, the eye movement? I was just trying to figure out what it was that was the consuming piece. I mean, it was exciting to see it, but I was trying to, so I thought some special ed people out here, so I think they might be able to answer that question.
Probably better than I can, but I know it is.
So, I don't know if Dr. Harrington wants to pitch in and speak to sensory items related to visual or otherwise on this particular sheet. Mrs. Sharp was a big clarionist, but the occupational therapists are the ones that created the list. So, that's one piece to the school district occupational therapist, here at our office, Mrs. Sharp, and they helped create this piece. And so, when we think about the senses, eyes, ears, touching, all of those senses should be touched in some way in this room. Williams is unique in that they have what they call now a wrap room, where they're trying to touch all of those senses just with what they have in the classroom. So, it really is amazing that, you know, Lindsay has come along, Advisors Excel has come along to see what they've done with just social workers, taking blood pressure and trying to come up with activities, to now really being able to do this in ways far beyond what they imagined. So, anything that you see has touch, has either a feeling piece, an eye piece, a listening piece to it. Dr. Harrington, did you want to add to this at all?
I think you've covered it. I mean, you've addressed the senses and each child responds differently, needs a different comb mechanism for themselves, and so you have to figure out what's right for which child.
So, the other pieces that you should know, in addition to Williams, the next schools, because this is not, Advisors Excel started with Williams and then they're looking at State Street and they're looking at Ross. And so, the cost of this investment is pretty incredible, and the idea that this is times multiple schools, it's been said already, but your level of investment is exceptional and the transformative way for our kids in the future is unbelievable. So, again, thank you so much and your impact.
Thank you. It's truly not possible without great partnerships, so I can't take that credit. You know, there are so many people, if I'm asked one question, I think most of you have heard me say this before, it's how do you make these connections and how do you find out about these needs? It's conversations, but more than anything, people want to be involved, they want to find ways to help. And all it is, is asking, it's coming to Greg and saying, hey, I have this request from 501, I'm not an expert in this, I don't know how to start this room, but you are. You know, tell me how we can turn this room into something that's needed. And I would just encourage everybody to continue this conversation. You never know who can help you, and that's exactly how Advisors Excel makes all of this happen.
Just about three or four years ago, maybe, maybe a little bit longer, Mrs. Kirk and myself happened to be talking to school people. And what we, they were noticing was an increase in behavior problems. So, we instituted multiple things, and there are other schools with these things, but not quite as fancy as what you guys have done. But I think that was an ask from virtually every school, was a behavior type room, because third grade teachers were having trouble teaching. So, we appreciate what you do, both of you.
Ms. Kirk, the bubble tube? I looked it up for you. Air is blown into the tube, making bubbles shimmer and flicker. Result is a calming effect, which also draws attention to the user. The effect helps promote visual stimulation and it encourages touch through the faint vibration.
I assumed it had to be visual, but beyond that, I think what it was.
How it works, so thank you.
Come check it out on the thirteenth.
Any further discussion? I think we're ready to vote.
The votes are open. All votes are in, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
So, ready for the superintendent's report?
This evening, we are excited, we have two reports this evening. One is a brief just update on enrollment, and so Mr. Kip and Ms. Klein are here. Enrollment just concluded this week, so Mr. Kip and Ms. Klein will come forward. Are you coming forward, please? Now, he's going to do a deeper dive, but this two-minute kind of piece of just sharing with you where we are today, based on the end of enrollment. Of course, we'll be giving you a deeper dive with the demographic and all of those other items, but we knew folks might want to know before school starts, that very quick update.
Okay, we started online registration on June twenty-second. We put in the registration dates on my, on my very green card, so everybody knew if they looked at the ready card. It's also published on the website. Our very, for the first day that we had registration, we only had seventy-six complete. After week one, we had a total of seven-hundred-and-eighty-two. Then it started getting about eight-hundred to a thousand each week. On enrollment day, we had three-thousand-six-hundred-and-ten complete registration. And when we ended registration on July thirty-first at midnight, we had ten-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-one complete registration.
Yeah, I just want to add to Ms. Klein's statistics. I think it's, you know, this is the third or fourth year we've done online registration, and each year we try to make the process more efficient, communicate it out to the schools a lot more. You know, they were coming in, like she said, at a rate of probably twenty a minute on enrollment day. Also, to help facilitate that for those that didn't want or didn't have access to computers, we did have the wealth center, so families could come in, complete the enrollment right there. We had Chromebooks set up, so, to avoid any barriers that some of the, you know, lower socioeconomic families were having. Surprisingly, one statistic I did want to mention here was, we asked families, do you have internet access at home? And that's always been kind of a concern, that digital divide between home and school. And ninety percent of our families, that's ninety percent of ten thousand families have internet access at home now. And you wouldn't see that kind of number maybe five years ago. So, something's happened in the community to where they are, maybe through cell phones or, I know Cox has a nice package for, you know, lower income families. But right now, we're rolling in the numbers. Some schools are doing paper, the old school, school way. So, our initial numbers are looking pretty good in terms of actual enrollment where I projected. So, we're just going to keep gathering the numbers and give you more of a detailed dive. There's some really good data we gathered in the enrollment process in regards to mental health that I think will be really useful and actionable data.
And so, as of today, Mr. Kip, the number as of today?
With all the paper copies and all the electronic online stuff, there's been ten-thousand-four-hundred-and-eleven registrations.
And so, with that, the mental health questions, we asked three questions from the ACEs survey, so we are now actually having a mental health, a way to assess mental health and do a very mini screening for every student. So, when we come back, we'll give you the data and what we learned from that, in addition to the breakdown demographically, and we look forward to that in a couple of weeks. It gives them a little bit more time. And we anticipate we'll have approximately thirteen thousand.
I'm predicting thirteen-seven for our children enrollment this year.
Which is very similar to what we had in previous, last year. Thank you both. The next report is, and I do want to mention as we transition to this next report, I also want to thank Mr. Gallon, who came in on the back end, and with our school having national colleges, somehow or another, he helped us get around that. And we did not have any national colleges in our area. That didn't impact us in the way that it might otherwise have. So, thank you, Mr. Gallon, for that extra effort and hours to make that so smooth with your team. And I turn it over to Mr. Robbins for the construction update.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I'd like to invite to the podium two gentlemen that I introduced earlier when we were outside for the ribbon cutting, that is Greg Swark and Kevin Brayshar. Kevin is from DL Lawrence, you heard Greg say that you were Swark Design. We are going to provide an update on our bond projects, projects in addition to the one that you had a chance to see and experience today. And we have some others in the audience that have been involved in bond projects, and I'm sure that Kevin and Greg will introduce as we work our way through this time.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins, members of the board. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. We haven't had an update to the board since, I think, the ribbon cutting and char dying, so a lot has happened. I think that we actually look tonight more as a celebration than maybe necessarily an update, because a lot has happened over the last three to four years, and we'll give you an update on that. Before we get into the presentation, though, I think we want to acknowledge several members of the architectural community that came out this evening. We invited them, we thought this was a special night for them as well, and I appreciate them being in attendance, and I think it's worthy to have them stand up and be acknowledged. So, all the architectural firm representatives that are here tonight, please stand. They've all been very instrumental in the completion of multiple of the projects that have been a bond issue. And, you know, it's been a pleasure for us as program managers to work with them through all the projects and kind of bring this to fruition and kind of starting to wrap up what we have in the project itself. So, with that, we'll move into the presentation and the wrap-up. Again, again, I think it's more of a celebration as to what's been accomplished. You know, the board and the community is to be commended for the courage and the efforts that going into the one-hundred-and-forty-three-million-dollar bond issue that was put forth four years ago, two thousand and fourteen.
You know, as we started to kind of put this information together and look back, I realized that we spent so much time these last four years looking ahead to the next project, that we really didn't take time to really reflect and appreciate what we've accomplished. You know, if you think back to two thousand and fourteen, one of the reports that I always keep handy with me is one that is dated January twenty-fourth of two thousand and fourteen. It's titled, "A Report of the Economic Impact from Construction Activities of Topeka Schools Two Thousand and Fourteen: Proposed Bond Projects to Topeka, Kansas." This is when we were first considering going out for a bond issue. This was a report from a group called Impact Data Source out of Austin, Texas. And when they did their analysis, they projected that our one-hundred-and-forty-three-million-dollar bond would have an economic impact on the Topeka community of two-hundred-and-seventy-eight-point-four billion dollars. billion dollars. That would create an estimated six-hundred-and-twenty-eight jobs each year that we were performing bond projects, and it was gonna have close to sixty million in salaries for area construction workers and other auxiliary workers. So, and also that the projects would create an estimated thirty-three billion dollars in local taxable sales. So, the economic impact was going to be significant for the Topeka community with this bond issue. As Dr. Morrison was commenting outside, you know, as we started to communicate to the community, there were certain commitments that we made, and hopefully, the board is very proud that we've been able to keep those commitments to the Topeka community. One of the things that we really pounded home in those communication meetings was that we proposed to issue these bonds with no increase in taxes for our residents, and we have been able to keep that promise. Not only has there been no increase in the mill epi for bond interest, but over this four-year period, we have reduced that mill epi, one entire mill, from where we were when we first started bond projects. So, one mill in this particular area, that's a savings of six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars per year. We could not have picked a better time to go out for a bond proposal, when you look at the interest climate that we had at that point in time. We've taken advantage of that, and the board is in position to, again, tell the constituents that you represent that over the course of the repayment schedule, which is thirty years, that there is going to be savings of close to sixty million dollars in interest, okay, because of us taking advantage of favorable interest rates. So, again, as you look back on what has been accomplished, hopefully, the board is very proud of the work that they did and the decision that they made to go out for this bond.
Yeah, this is one thing, what our deputy superintendent said, that I think is really important, and it's not his manner to pat himself on the back, but he's, has a key role in this. The other thing that results in that very favorable interest rate is having the second-highest bond rating of a school district in the state of Kansas. So, because we had done such an excellent job of managing our books and controlling our, our spend and still meeting all the students' needs, we were able to do all this and pull down that significant savings. So, some thanks is due, of course, to the board and administration for that.
Thank you. We'll get into, again, I, I think, you know, Mr. Robbins was starting to highlight some of the things that, you know, have been accomplished. I think some of the facts, I think, are, are important in terms of the impact of the community. I mean, it was important to the board that they involved a lot of local players in this. That was very, made very specific early on. As you can see, we've had twenty-six projects, eight different architectural firms, fourteen engineering firms, nine general contractors, and we've affected fourteen thousand students throughout this process. And I think, you know, there are some things that, I don't know if you had any other comments on that, Mr. Robbins?
Well, just for the, the board to know, again, for the commitment that was made, those eight architectural firms, that's one-hundred percent of firms in the Topeka area. So, you know, we committed to use as much local labor and spend as many of these dollars locally as we possibly could, and that's what we've done. Of the fourteen engineering firms, ten were Topeka community firms, nine general contractors, all of them were led by Topeka firms. And even the subcontractors, when you look at all the subcontractors that have been used on these projects, sixty-five percent of them are, again, Topeka subcontractors, Topeka firms.
You know, and again, I commend the board. That's a commitment you typically don't see in a school district. Usually, a bond issue is, is passed, one firm is selected. It was important to them that everyone shared in the projects, and it worked well. I think everyone, you know, was, was happy doing work for the district. And even those program managers, it may have made our lives a little bit more difficult, but it worked well, and we were, we were happy and happy working with them. Again, some more statistics that I think were telling. Out of those twenty-six, twenty-six buildings have been improved. We have fourteen new storm shelters. As Dr. Morrison was commenting early on, outside of the ribbon cutting, safety was of, of high importance on the, on the priorities of the board. And so, we have fourteen new storm shelters, two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand square feet of new construction. I think we were even somewhat shocked when we started putting these numbers together this week in terms of the amount of new construction, two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand square feet of renovated construction, one-hundred-and-thirteen new classrooms, and a hundred-and-sixteen renovated classrooms. So, significant impact in the district in terms of the facilities that we have. Again, safety and security, not only in terms of the storm shelters, was a high priority. As you can see, eight facilities received security fencing. Forty-one facilities received security upgrades. You can see what that included, security lighting, security cameras, and door access controls, thirty-seven facilities with panic buttons, thirty-three facilities with security window film, and nineteen-point-five million dollars in terms of a commitment of technology upgrade to those facilities. Again, also interesting, it wasn't just the improvement of the classrooms themselves. I think it was the commitment to new programs that was part of this initiative. As you can see, the T-Calc, you know, a state-of-the-art facility for training and eight different career paths, you know, one of, only few in the state. And then, again, it is a, a true gem for the district and will be looked at and admired for years to come. The Shainer Early Learning Academy, we expanded the preschool opportunities substantially within the district with fifteen new preschool classrooms, significant impact. The Sheldon Child Development Center, adding two new classrooms with a storm shelter. Again, something much needed. And then, here tonight, the Hope Street Academy, adding the science classrooms, the security with the, with the storm shelter here, and also enhancements to the regular classroom. So, and those are special programs within the district that are not only beyond just the educational aspects, that again, commitment, significant commitment was made to. We also have the, the Jardine Pre-K STEM School. That replaced three of the older elementary schools and combined many new programs into one facility. Again, a state-of-the-art facility, hasn't been done within the district and within the area. And so, again, it was that forward-thinking vision that the board had that brought some of these to fruition, and then, the outcome of that freed up Shainer to become the Early Learning Academy. As you can see, all the class, all the science classrooms have been upgraded in six of the middle schools and all four of the high schools. So, significant improvement in our science and technology from that standpoint. And then, currently under construction is the Bishop Professional Development Center. Again, state-of-the-art training facility, bringing something for the educators, not just for the students. So, again, infecting everybody in, in terms of the district, in terms of how education will be seen and utilized in the future within the district itself. Tremendous facility that, I think, will be very highly used as we go forward. Probably of, of special interest is that of the hundred-and-forty-three million of the bond that was committed, currently, there's a hundred-and-forty million of that encumbered, leaving a net balance of close to three million dollars. And as Mr. Robbins indicated, a highly favorable bond issue in period. We've already incurred three-point-one million dollars in, in accrued interest, and so, we have a, a surplus at this point in time of six million dollars with only two projects left to complete. And so, I think that, again, very highly successful, will allow the district to look at some other things. I know there's been some talk of some additional security upgrades and big technology upgrades, but again, it has been highly successful from that standpoint.
We still have to, what we have encumbered from those funds would be the technology that is required for the Bishop, uh, Professional Development Center. So, we still have to do that. Then we'll still have funds left over. As Greg mentioned, we would like to go back and enhance some of our safety and security features for our schools. We have identified a number of projects across the district that will total about one-point-five billion, and that still leaves dollars available for us to take another look at technology to see if there's anything that we need to do to upgrade our infrastructure, or if we can devote additional dollars to, to technology devices.
All right, there is your list of completed projects, significant. I think now we'll get into some of the fun things with the...
Sure. I'll just, I'll just jump in really quick, and we'll run through, so you can see some finished projects. I think the fun, the fun thing about this is that you're, and, and the architects that worked on these projects. I think that one of the things that is really, you should be proud of, is your community of architects and engineers that came together. The reason why you are under budget is because of every one of the people that did work on the projects, not only the administrators here at the district, but as, as well as the architects that, that did work on the project. So, this was one of the first projects. I don't think that anybody actually has seen it in these pictures, because this was the first project out of the gate, and so, a really nice little addition at Highland Park Central Elementary School. And to contrast that, the same architect did both of those, and I think that you can see the quality of what's going on. You're gonna get the opportunity to go look at, at your new T-Calc facility, I believe, soon. Just, most of these, we have an exterior and an interior of each one. I think there's some, some exciting things that are happening in every one of the buildings, but you can see the quality of what's happening. Capital City High School, which is now full and, and operating. See the interior of it? I think you have toured it. Jardine Pre-K Aids School, that's, that's another dynamic facility for the community of Clor. As we started down this path and began the process of, of shelters for all, all of the elementary schools, I think that, though you have a multitude of architects working on them, but if you walk around these buildings, you're gonna see buildings that match the existing architecture. You'll think your architects did a nice job. So, all theme shoulders, Whitson, Quincy. Again, if you can see the other buildings in the background, it might be a little hard, but as you can see the other buildings in the background, use of the, the break that was similar, even the style of architecture. Carter, got a number of additions. McCaffrey, same thing. Randolph. I think, again, another exceptionally well-done addition to a, a building that everyone drives, drives by and looks at and, and admires as a, as a real neighborhood school. Over the hill.
I think also, as you can see, most of these, all of these shelters are also multi-purpose rooms, so a highly utilized space, not just from a shelter standpoint, but also from a school standpoint.
And I think that was the planning that, that your district architect looked at originally and made sure that they weren't just shelters, that they just weren't made for shelters. So, I think that, just like this facility, all of them are that way. Sheldon Child Development, I think there's a, a fun aspect. I'm gonna get pretty excited here pretty soon. Hope Street, you guys just got to go through the, the science rooms recently. Shain, Pre-K. One of the things that happened also is that one architectural firm in the community did all of your science rooms. So, and I believe that, if I'm right, we, most of, I think all of them were also done by the same general contractor. So, kind of ended up being a, a good, a good use of both of your time. So, these are your state-of-the-art eighth grade, most of these are the eighth-grade classrooms with the bean tables. That is Topeka West. And most, oh, what did we do there? I guess you guys didn't do that good job. So, I think that, that, the nice thing here is that this was the most interesting single or project that we, we had. There was a lot of people in the room that were totally concerned about what was gonna happen after the renovation happened. So, you can see, I think you, you can be pretty proud that, that your architects did a great job of keeping with the character of this historical building and maintained a lot of the existing casework, because that, we couldn't get casework built like that today. So, the, the last couple of projects that you used, that you have on the books that are under, under construction. We've got one tonight, we, similar to other board meetings, we like to highlight one in tonight. Bishop, Pete, you wanna come up and go through Bishop?
Well, I'm happy to. I've gotten to watch many number of these projects, and this is really the first one that I've had an opportunity to, uh, work on. And Greg, Greg, Greg gave me the opportunity to be, the project manager for Bishop, and it's really been a pleasure working with the team at Swart Design Group. We've taken the original Bishop building and actually done quite little with the exterior, except to add an entrance, a new entrance to the north and a new entrance to the south. You'll see pictures of those coming up. And we've enhanced the park by adding about, I'd, I'd say about three-hundred-and-sixty-five parking spaces to the south of the building, keeping the thirty-five or thirty-eight there on the north side of the building. So, the site itself, while it's going to be transformed, is, I, I believe, still gonna be recognized in the community as Bishop. This is a rendering, because we don't have any photographs yet, of the north side of the building, I believe. And the south side, just the other way around. I have a hard time seeing it from this angle. This, this is the north side of the building, where you're used to coming up and, and dropping off. And then, we go into a number of different types of conferences that are, have been carved out of the interior. Right now, if you were to walk through the building, you can see it's a blank canvas. Virtually all of the walls, except those that are necessary to hold up this rib structure, are gone. And it's gonna be infilled by, instead of classrooms, it's gonna be conference rooms, presentation centers, and gathering places during, or during the conferences. There's gonna be a small sort of cafe, discussion area, collaboration area. We have a multi-purpose room. Again, the south entry from the inside, the administration of the building will be on your right as you're leaving. There'll be, I believe, four people that spend, that's their job to be in this facility, although it's going to be used during the day, it's gonna be used in the evening, for teachers of all different skill levels and different areas of expertise to come together and to train, to help our children. to come together and to train to help our children. As you can see, we're, at this time, we're on schedule. We have, we might even, no, I'm not going to say it. Demolition is virtually complete right now. And we have taken bids from the Kristen Contractors, has taken bids for the demolition, but also all the concrete work on the inside and all the steel work for the new entrances. We're processing submittals and soon all of that stuff will be put together and delivered to the site for assembly. I don't know if you have any questions for me. Next, this next week, we're going to be taking bids for the rest of the building.
So just a quick question, so substantial completion in July of 2019. And of course, I take it the entire building will be one hundred percent complete by the next school year in August.
We're slightly to be complete with Bishop by early July.
I've had neighborhood people ask me if the playground is going to be still there.
The playground will not be at its current location because of the construction of the parking lot. We are looking and evaluating what it would take to relocate the playground equipment and possibly add some additional pieces on that property so that the neighborhood children would have access to it.
Bishop has, for a long period of time, been a neighborhood school. And so these were all neighbors that asked these questions. So I appreciate that you're looking into doing something like that.
Yeah, and we've become familiar with some of those issues because just about three weeks ago, or two weeks ago, we had a neighborhood meeting where we invited the neighbors to come, the church just to the south of the facility, donated their space, and we had a good vigorous discussion about all the things that were going to be happening over, not only over the next year, but in years to come as this building is utilized. Playground was one of those things that came along. The last project that we're working on is a new storm shelter for the Highland Park Central Elementary School. This project has been really exciting for me to watch. How you look at this concrete box and how do you say it's exciting? We started in late spring with clearing the site, moving the dirt, and building foundations with the goal, if we could possibly get all that stuff done and the weather didn't mess us up, we could get the precast concrete spun and welded into place by the time school started. And as of last week, the last of the welding was finished. And that, I don't know if you realize it, is a huge safety concern for all of us on the program management team, all of the folks at the district who are overseeing this kind of work, and for the teachers and parents. So I'm very pleased with that contractor, that he pushed that and made it happen. He's also working to finish an emergency exit or a little building to the north so that the children have a safe way to get out to the playground.
Same schedule, be ready next year. I put this in here, this is comic related. You won't have to look at the schedule, this isn't in the I-Test anymore. All of those red lines are your finished projects. And you just have to feel out. One of the things that we told you last time is that we are going to be promoting all the work that has been done. You've got some projects here that should be celebrated by the educational community as well as the architectural community. And so we'll be at least being cheerleaders for you to talk to the architects to make sure they submit these for awards. So that'll be down under. Any questions?
Not a question, but I just, and we're all saying the same thing, thank you. This is, you know, when we decided to do this, it was like a million years ago now. And I, you know, I had no concept, how it was ever going to get done. How we're ever going to really, ever, there was so much. And we had so many dreams and so many hopes for what we were going to be able to accomplish. And you've done it all, and it's just amazing. And it's way beyond my ability to understand how you all got it together. But you know, when we made a tour of Capital City and to remember what that place looked like before you renovated it and turned it into the building that it's now, I mean, when I saw that, I said, this is going to be okay. This, whatever we're going to be doing here, is going to be okay. Because it was such an amazing transformation. And it was done in such a way that it recognized the special needs of the kids who were going to be here. I mean, we may have made some errors in certain kinds of certain areas, but the overall approach to building that and making the transformation was based upon what you understood those children needed. And it was beautiful, it's beautiful. Why shouldn't it be beautiful? I mean, that was the thing, and I think it was the principal said when the kids walked in, the first time they saw, said, "This is for us." I mean, it was like somehow, they never had anything that beautiful and that exciting for them. And I just felt it was wonderful. So I guess, for me, that was, that was really, I mean, I said, "This is going to be really good" before. It's not, and certainly, so thank you very much.
Just one personal comment. When I was in high school, in like seventh, I wanted to be an architect. And unfortunately for your profession, I didn't. And what happened was, I took graphic through high school. And I took graphic one and graphic two, graphic three, and in my senior year, I weren't enough interested in students to take graphic four, once they didn't offer the graphic four. And I lost in the first screen that, my senior year. So I did something better than, I'm probably better suited for what I do now. Regardless, as I look over the eyes and see group of architectural architects and owners of architectural firms and businesses, I can't help but think that we ought to get together with Mr. Robbins and figure out ways to hire our students after their school, a couple hours a week, a few hours a week. So people like me, who had a desire to enter the design firm back then, might keep that interest alive. So I encourage you, if you have the opportunity or the need to hire a student that might be able to empty your trash or hang out or do whatever you do, galleries or something like that, maybe consider something. Thank you for your work. We can't wait to get our students in all of these buildings and let them roam the house. Thanks for your excellent work.
Other question? Thank you all very much. Ready for board member comments? That firm, Mary Williams.
Just a reminder, I'll be out of town next week, so unable to attend a conversation. Before hearing all that.
I'll be at my house on Saturday. Did we want to, as Mrs. Kurt mentioned, she thought maybe six would be better. I originally said five o'clock. Six, okay. Okay, so it's six o'clock in my house, two thirty-six Greenwood. Not the rest of you. It's a little board retreat, not a retreat, a party. And if you have questions about what to, just get in touch with me and I can let you know. Okay?
Much, Mr. President, except to say that I'm excited about a couple of weeks from now, getting ready to start with the first day of school. So I have my list of schools that I start with. And I guess I need to reach out to, make sure and confirm, right? Time to get everything to start.
Send you an email, right?
Perfect, perfect. I'm excited about it. So although it seems like it came way too fast, and I have a bit of a logistical thing to work out now, having a middle school. We'll get out probably with my other kid. August fourteenth, right around the morning.
I had something, but it's gone, so it mustn't have been important to call it.
All right, we do have two extra meetings. And you were asked to, we need a quorum. So I know some of you are going to miss those meetings. Meetings, for all you need to know, is about the budget, basically. So we have to reset the budget and then we have to have a public comment on the budget. So, yeah. So everybody. We have to have a quorum here. So I think she says she's got everyone. Oh, you got everyone, right?
The first one is August. First one is August eighth.
And then twenty-second. The eighth is our eleventh, is preliminary confirmation. And then the twenty-second is six thirty as mine. Last year it was five thirty. I'm happy to change it if you'd rather have it earlier than later. I'm.
Anybody? Anybody care about five thirty? No? Keep it the same.
Give it five thirty or six thirty?
I thought it was six thirty.
We set it for six thirty, but last year it was five thirty. So I was given the option.
It is set for six thirty. Does anybody want to change it to five thirty?
I can't make that date, so.
We'll keep it at six thirty.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Got you. Bring a vote.